Well, we didn't.
So new on the app, this may be fun.
Is this November on election year, Brown? Oh, okay. I saved after that. If you pull up, if you try and join, what it's like to download the app.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
A lot of people don't join by phone.
The rush.
Another one.
Yes.
How many public speakers have you been there?
Oh, you've done. They says they present from lateral location.
Which is great.
Yeah.
But I notice you have public. You're getting a lot of butter.
You know, not a lot.
Um, and those characteristics are way different. So, does it have enough room? Is the site big enough to physically handle it? That's something that carries a large amount of weight. Is it a town-owned site? That's something that carries a lot of weight. Does it have water and sewer? That's something that carries a, a medium amount of weight. Does it have any, um, impediments? That would be financial barriers to development? Like significant amount of rocks? Or is the site, um, a brownfield site? That would carry a significant amount of negative weight. We put all those factors into our spreadsheet. And we establish a score or a ranking for the site. But this is not an exact science. But what it does allow us to do is to look at the four sites. See if any of the sites stand out above and beyond the other sites. When we ranked all four sites, the Patterson Way site across the street from the high school came out with the highest ranking. With the, um, Sage Park site coming in behind it about, you know, twenty, twenty percent behind it. What that tells me is that, yeah, maybe one of the categories could have been rated one or two points more or less. But all in all, of all the factors considered, the Patterson Way site was the most advantageous site for a number of reasons. Particularly because it's closest to the residential center of the community. It's adjacent to a number of arteries, um, Farmington Avenue. Um, it's close to the commercial district. It's safe, it's within walking distance of a lot of neighborhoods. It's town-owned, has enough land. It's directly adjacent to the high school. So if there is an aquatics component or a gym component, there can be some, um, programmatic interchange between those two sites. It offers intergenerational programming, um, for seniors, um, directly across the site from the high school. So having access to public utilities make it a, a good site. There were some detriments at the site. The back of the site has a flood plain that we would have to stay out of. And there is some topography on the site. But after further exploration, the topography proves that it will actually, um, be favorable, help create a favorable solution to the site. So with that, we made a recommendation to the public building committee that they continue to explore a new center at the Patterson Way site. They agreed and voted to have us move forward with the study. So our next step was to start putting some diagrams together of what a building, how a building would be configured based on the programmatic spaces that we put together and the site requirements. And we came up with what is actually a two-story scheme. There is approximately, um, fifteen to twenty feet of grade difference, viable grade difference from the front end of the site to the back end of the site. What that allows us to do is put the majority of the recreation programs at the lower level. So all of the tall spaces, the gymnasium, the pool, um, can be buried into the grade. And then the majority of the senior programming can all be on one level at the upper level. Each level would have direct access from grade. And they would be joined by a central corridor. The scheme is very efficient. It limits the amount of circulation space in the building and gets all of the activity spaces directly off that communicating corridor. We presented this to the building committee, um, they liked the scheme. The configuration would be such that there would be exterior patio space off the multifunction rooms, um, that faces to the east. So after review of this, they directed us to continue on with our schematic design exploration. So we took the site and tried to look at all of the different factors. You can see in this diagram Patterson Way is on the right. And it, that is essentially to the south of the site. So, um, the sun rises on the east, which is the north side of the site, that are the upper pa- uh, part of the page, and sets in the west, which is the lower side. And you can see that from Patterson Way, the grade drops off. Couple other key elements that we wanted to take note of was the fact that there's a significant neighborhood adjacent to the site on the east side of the site. Uh, we want to be extremely sensitive to that neighborhood in our scheme. And there are homes, um, on this side of the site, which is, um, center of the road. Lower lane, thank you. Apologize. So we started thinking about the site and we explored three to five different options. How the site and the building might be configured on the site. But ultimately, we decided the best way to configure the set, the building would be to tuck it into this notch on the site and allow the big, the bigger spaces to be set below. This would provide parking above the building, parking below the building. It would create a bigger space between the building and the adjacent neighborhood. So we could create a large buffer. And then an access, an access drive to the lower portion of the site. Diagram. So when developed in greater detail, the site looks a little bit like this, where we would have access, boulevard access off Patterson Way. You'd have parking at the north portion of the site. Please keep in mind that this is diagrammatic in nature. Obviously, there are many iterations of this design to follow. We would have a drop-off area and access to the upper level. Um, we would have a dedicated human services entrance. One key component to human services is having discreet access to the food pantry and social services. So that patrons that have to use those programs don't necessarily have to pass through the building. And then access to the lower side of the site where you would enter the lower portion of the building, which is for all intents and purposes, a recreation entrance. Both ends of the building would be anchored by administrative program. So on the upper level, and this is an upper level concept floor plan, um, seniors would walk in the front door. And right at the heart of the lobby would be a cafe space. This would be the gathering and social space of the center. Um, not only serving, um, daily senior programming, um, and, um, daily recreation programming, but also being, uh, socialization hub for any afternoon, evening, weekend activities or recreation activities. There's a soft classroom, library space. Um, and then multifunction classrooms to the left with administration right near the front entrance observing, um, the entire front corridor. Rest facilities are there. And then down the corridor are two game rooms that would look out onto, look over the gymnasium. The gymnasium would have an upper level walking track for recreation and senior walking, which would be accessed from the upper level of the lobby. And then human services and food pantry would be down on the lower left end with its own discreet entrance. Now down the main gallery space, um, to the right are the multifunction spaces. This multifunction room is based on your current activity classroom spaces at the community center. But we would configure them in a bank of four with operable partitions. So much like a banquet facility, those rooms could be opened up to accommodate, um, a, a wide variety of programming requirements. So when all, when it's totally open, you have complete access to the patio. You could seat up to two hundred and fifty people for a dining event. And individually, there are classrooms that seat up to about fifty people. You'd have direct access to the kitchen, so it could, it could support fully catered events. Um, the kitchen itself would not only address daily programming needs for the senior center, their lunches. It would be able to do three major things. One, it would be a catering kitchen. Two, it could be a warming kitchen. Three, it would be a full commercial kitchen, so food could be prepared there. A lot of communities want to build this flexibility into the planning of their center because it could also be a source of revenue generation. Communities like West Hartford rent their multifunction room out for a wedding reception, um, public gatherings. And you can have convention events, um, in a center of this size. In the north corner would be arts and crafts classroom, um, anchoring the end of the, um, end of the upper level gallery. You can see to the left would be two, um, large spaces. The one is gym and one is the pool. The lower level of the center would enter from the rear. There would be a lower level lobby and Parks and Rec administration would anchor that end of the gallery space. There would be two fitness, weights and cardio rooms. Currently, the, um, community center has a weight room, uh, a fitness center. But what neither the senior center nor the community center have is actual fitness room. Of a space where you do strength, stretch and balance, or tai chi, or yoga. Um, a space that has resilient flooring. Gone are the days of true multifunction rooms that, where you eat lunch and then the next minute you have a dance classroom. You really need two multi, two types of multifunction rooms. An entertaining room, which is like the multifunction classroom, which is set up to handle food events. And then a fitness classroom, which has components like, uh, resilient flooring. Because our s- um, seniors and, you know, active adults really need to address their well-being. Also, that space is in different environmental conditions than, let's say, an entertainment space. Across the hallway from the exercise rooms would be the gymnasium, um, and the pool center. What we envision is a gymnasium that is the size of a, what we would call a middle school gymnasium. It would have a full-size high school court, um, running east-west. And two middle school courts running, um, across, across court or two, um, elementary school courts. So this would be large enough to support all of your public recreation events, recreational basketball, et cetera. Um, there would be bleachers and storage. This would be set up to handle, um, as many components as possible. Currently in Newington, it was similar type gymnasium in the food, uh, community center. But it's a rec gym, so it has wrestling mats. So it'll have a batting cage, it'll have all sorts of fun activities that it will support. In the center are locker rooms, men's, family and women's locker rooms. And then we envision an aquatic center. The aquatic center is diagrammatic at this point. The statement of need calls for competition-type pool, um, of eight lanes and a therapy pool adjacent to it, um, with room for spectators. All of this would access that lower level lobby space. And then you could go up the grand staircase, which would serve sort of as an amphitheater to the upper level. This is a rendering of what the size of the building looked like, um, compared to the site. And I felt this was important to show because as a part of the development of this project, we would need to be sensitive to all the neighboring residences. And by building the building into the grade, the building would only be one story high from the Patterson Way site, even though we have two large components, the gym and the pool. The grade falls away to the back, so as you go down to the back, the rear face of the building is two stories tall, but it looks out to this flood plain, open recreation area. But you can see the scale of the adjacent homes that are two stories. Um, the height of those homes will actually be a little higher than the front of this building. In addition, because we set the building closer to lower lane, we can maintain the big buffer of trees that is currently between this neighborhood and the field. And that would be reinforced. And then you can see we have parking at the top and bottom, and then an outdoor patio that faces to the east. Uh, another thing to note is, go back one please. One of the concerns is the fact that the big building, um, and big spaces like a gym and a pool, we're gonna have huge mechanical. In our scheme, we're actually hiding all of the mechanical units in a well, which is on top of the locker room. So the large mechanical units won't sit up on the roof. They wouldn't be seen from the neighborhood. It'd conceal. So this is a rendering, a, a concept of what the center would look like from the senior center entrance off of Patterson Way. Um, it would have a, a one-story sort of, um, brick veneer with a glass entrance, a drive-under canopy, so patrons can, um, get out and enter the building under protection. And you can see to the right, this is the outdoor patio with some cover that would be directly off the multifunction space. And here's a view of that patio space. You can see as the grade falls, it only gets taller. And then as you come down below the site and come to the rear, which would be the recreation entrance, you can see this is where the rec, on the left is where the recreation administration would be. They can see out and monitor the site as well as the lobby. And on the right of that larger box would be the pool structure with clear story lights. This is a concept view of what the entry foyer would look like as you come in. To the right would be a soft classroom and here would be a cafe of some configuration. And you pass that cafe right down into the main gallery. This is a view of what that main gallery would hopefully look like. Uh, before you go down the stairs, um, up to the right is the upper gallery where the multifunction rooms are. They would look down onto the gallery. Into the left would be a partially, um, translucent wall looking into the gymnasium and the pool. Here's a view from the other end, looking back, um, towards the front entrance. And you can see the amphitheater-type stairs. And then this is a view from the recreation entrance lobby. And you can see you get a peek into the aquatic center. And finally, this is what the recreation gym might be. So we've put a lot of work into this over the last three months. And we've gotten to the point where we really can't go any further without public input, without towns' input. Well, how do you feel about the center? Is it bigger than we need? What do you want in the center? What are the little elements that would be important to you as a user and a patron? That's the information that we need to mold the program and ultimately mold the image of the center. Because this building will ultimately represent the town of Brooklyn for fifty-five years. So that's where we are. And, uh, we have a lot of information. I know this is a lot of information, we have packets to give you to see what you want that. But if you have any questions, I'd love to hear your question.
Yeah, yes, sir. Uh, a couple things. Was any consideration given to having an over-street walkway from the school to the?
That's a good question. Um, I have not been approached with that. Um, so the answer right now is no. But that's, that's really an interesting component. That's the kind of input that we need to hear. Maybe that has to be a part of the project. Or maybe there needs to be, if not an over-street structure, uh, maybe there needs to be some sort of traffic control device or pedestrian traffic control device, um, at that location. Um, that's a good point.
And only because, um, I can remember driving around high school, at high school. And it tends to, you know, I mean, there's a bump there now, there's a, um, but kids are kids, I mean, gonna come out wide and all, what streets. But I thought a, an over-road access takes that element out of it completely. I mean, I don't know how expensive it is, but I just threw it out for your, you know, for your consideration. Also, is there water problems on the north side of that property?
So there are, um, water problems on the north side of the property. There is a flood plain, if you go back to the overall site plan. The back port, the north portion of the site. Sorry, can make this happen. In short, yes, I'll, I'll show you where. Um, our, um, improvements will have to stay out of that air net. So, um, this, the, the flood pain plane comes across the back of the site like this. So the parking area would be, um, up just out of the flood plain. The lawn area would actually be infestation area so that rainwater and stormwater can be addressed. The lower level would be up out of the flood plain of the building. Um, and we would take, we would do cuts and fills. So we'd take some of the soil that we're cutting out of the hill and use it to, um, raise the grade of back in this parking area. But the pool, the aquatic center, interestingly enough, would actually have to be treated to address the water table issue there. So it would be a, it would be a bathtub, it would be encased in that night.
And, and I know that flood's uncertain, I think it's up on a year, it starts. And you're away from that.
We would have to be away from that.
To speak to what, um, he was just talking about, would a traffic study be necessary?
So, anything we do will have to go to planning and zoning. And in this consi- in, in this type of development, we'll absolutely have a traffic study as a part of its submission. So again, this is a great concept. And a lot of people are gonna have a lot of ideas or thoughts about what this should be. And I guarantee you, planning and zoning, soon as they get their eyes on this, they're gonna be calling me saying, "What?" So traffic study will absolutely be a part, a part of the process and, um...
We, uh, how many parking spaces does, uh, this facility?
So we've recommended, um, parking for two hundred cars. But I think realistically, this configuration shows two hundred and fifty. More than likely, a large portion of that two fifty will be overflow parking. So what I prefer to see is like something more along the lines of a hundred and, a hundred to a hundred and fifty cars of hardscape and a hundred cars of overflow area, like lawn parking. Realistically, the way community centers work, and we found that they're very, very successful, is that seniors tend to use the programs significantly between, say, eight AM and about one thirty, two PM. Then we see our senior center, or our community centers, um, experience, um, youth programs, after-school programs from about two o'clock to five o'clock. And then we tend to see a lot of community activities happen more in the evening, from like four to nine, four to ten. So the benefit is, is that you don't have everybody there at the same time. So it's highly unlikely that you have two hundred and fifty cars at this facility, um, more than, I, I don't wanna throw a number out for fear of being crucified, but the point is, is that
Yeah, don't do that.
Over, shared parking, overflow parking is not only a good environmental response to the solution, but it's more realistic.
You did a lot of study for our particular town, well, it seems like there's a lot of, um, issues we have to offer. In this type of cent- what kind of town would also be put in this type of center as far as like similar populations, similar sort of?
Great question. So we just finished, we're, we're working on one, and we just finished two other community centers. Newington is currently under construction. Their community center has just a gym, does not have an aquatic center. Their multifunction room isn't as big, but they have an independent senior center. So, um, their functions are separate. Newtown is a great example. Um, similar-sized community, um, perhaps a little different demographic. Um, but I think very similar in a lot of ways. Newtown opted for no gymnasium, they opted for an aquatic center. This is an issue the town will struggle with because, um, a gym is ten thousand square feet and a pool is twelve thousand square feet. And the services for a pool are another five thousand square feet. So a lot of times when it comes down to the final price tag, towns have to decide, am I gonna have a pool or am I gonna have a gym? And that may be a decision the town decides to, to make. But Newtown decided to go with an aquatic center and they built a pool. But they actually built two pools. They built a recreation pool and, um, an activity or swimming pool. Because there are two very different elements. A competition pool is a pool that usually is kept at, you know, sixty-eight, seventy-two degrees water temperature. A recreation pool or therapy pool is kept at eighty degrees. Um, it's, it's a pleasant, it's a fun pool, it's swimming lessons, it's youth swimming, it's activities, it's, you know, therapy, it's water volleyball, it's spray park. A, a competition pool, which is a program that you don't have in your community either, is something that i- is, is really meant for competitive swimming and lab swimming and can be used. So in this configuration, the statement of need from the community actually said, "Oh, we really kinda need a competition pool because we don't have that in our high school. But could we have a therapy pool, um, as a part of it so that we can do some activities and, you know, water aerobics?" And so, um, this, what we're currently showing is sort of a, a combination. But the, the final center we just did was Branford. Branford just cut their ribbon three months ago. That was an additional renovation project. And they have a gymnasium in their media center, senior center. As I'm sure you're aware, one of the biggest challenges with community recreation and the use of the gymnasiums is that they, while you have gymnasiums in your community, they tend to fall under the purview of the Board of Education, which isn't a bad thing. But sometimes it limits use for a lot of good reasons, like cost, like oversight, security and safety for the educational campus. In Branford, um, they wanted a gym that they could use for recreational activities all the time. And the town actually, town had purview, Parks and Rec had purview over it. In Newtown, they wanted the aquatic center kind of for the same reason. I know Bloomfield just did, um, a community center. We did not do the Bloomfield project. It's a community senior center. There are some components of our concept design that was influenced by their project. It's a very nice project. They have a big gymnasium, no aquatic center.
So you've done twenty, uh, community centers or projects. So they all in Connecticut, or you've done, uh, Brooklyn, or?
So all of our projects are in Connecticut, all of those. We've done Darien's Community Center, the Mather Center. We did Plainville Senior Center. Um, not all are community centers, some are senior centers, some are community centers, some are, are both.
Uh, I'll make it to the panel, but so the other sites, just out of curiosity, how did they rank like four sites, how do they?
So Sage
I couldn't see it.
Yep. So Sage Park was a close second, it came out at two forty, so we were two eighty, two forty. Um, Sage Park was the second best and really a viable site. Um, it's on an artery, it, there's enough space up there that we can make it happen. Unfortunately, we'd have to move parking around and um add, you know, add some infrastructure.
You mentioned like the front, Sage, yeah, with the front.
Yeah, the front Sage Park. Um, you know, some of the detractions were, you know, adding traffic to the, the turnpike and getting access to that location from the turnpike. Um, that was a struggle, but some of the benefits are, there's a lot of recreation there. So there's, there's an opportunity for um interspersed recreational programming. And there's a lot of services on um, on the Brooklyn Turnpike. So if you're having types of events where travel teams are coming, you know, they can patronize the, the centers on the turnpike.
Do you know where?
We thought that was a good site, I did not have an issue with Sage Park, I just felt Patterson was better for community center because of its location. And um, no one's really walking to Sage Park. The Town Hall site was actually rated next, um, there's size there. But unfortunately, I think Town Hall site would be um prohibitively expensive. There's a significant amount of grade issues back behind the site. I'm not talking on the field, I'm talking going down behind the police station.
Yeah.
And down in the grade.
Yeah.
There's a lot of ledge out there, it's just very difficult to create a nice flat site or reasonably flat site for a center parking. Um, someone did mention to me, um, personal on field, which butts up to it, could you put a center on personal field? We did not explore that option. Um, it's possible, that creates a significant amount of traffic, a lot, personal. Um, that's not necessarily the corridor that um set up for that. You know, Patterson Way, you could say the same about Patterson Way and Lower Lane, but Patterson Way and Lower Lane are, are currently pretty strong secondary connectors, and there's a lot of, a lot of vehicular traffic there to begin with. So there's a lot of use of Patterson. Um, and then finally Pistol Creek, it's just, Pistol Creek was way remote. Uh, on the other side of the turnpike was very disconnected from the rest of the community. Access would have been hard, development costs would have been hard, the site's not that big. So of the four town owned sites we looked at, we felt Patterson was the best. Uh, we didn't look at any non-town owned sites without being corrected, so by the community. But again, that requires purchase, sometimes it requires cleanup, speculating. Um, we generally recommend that communities pursue sites um that they own because, you know, either way, an undertaking of this nature is going to have significant costs included. And so we need to be financially responsible, trying to sell at the lowest total cost for that.
Yeah.
Also, I hear, um, you know, I appreciate you telling us in the beginning of what we have early for basic personal proposed, you know, possibly solidating things when I think about the police station, how big that was and the price tag of that. This is going to have times the size of that. You know, one of the things I see here that happened with the police station is you gotta state what the need and everybody puts in, why? But you never see options, and it's never done upfront. So you give us a nice beautiful building, you're talking about whether we're gonna afford a floor gym. That never starts again, it comes later, and then we fight about it, you know? People always ask me, well, why don't we have options? Well, that's not how the statement of need process works. And it, man, I always thought that, that should be done differently, you know? Because this is gonna be a huge number.
So I can't, I, I'm not gonna dispute your position. And that's something we, we experience in every community that's undertaking a search like this. Um, generally, we start with what everybody wants. And then we start kind of pairing it back to really what we can afford and what is the most responsible choice for the community. One of the reasons we do public outreach and we start here at the council is as leaders of the community, um, we're gonna need feedback from you, from this body, from what you're hearing throughout the community. Well, I don't, I don't know if we can afford that, or I don't know if we really need that, is that a responsible decision? Um, there are ways, obviously, to make a building smaller and um we work with the end user on it. In this particular case, uh, we will more than likely be exploring multiple options as the costs associated with doing a project like this become harder. I'll be very open, it's, it's public information, you can go to every other town that's recently done their community centers. Public construction of this nature is in the ballpark of four hundred dollars a square foot. Um, that's not a hidden, that's not a hidden thing. So I'm not gonna give you a sticker for it.
Do the math.
Your product. Yeah, I'm not gonna give you a sticker price because I can't tell you that this is the, I can't tell you that this is the end solution.
Yeah.
But um, you know, magnitude of cost is important. The community's gonna ultimately have to make a decision. But we've been tasked by the Public Building Commission to provide a program that meets the statement of need. And then we will react based on the input we get from the public, from your commission, from the building committee, and adjust it. The, I do know this, the original goal was, our task was to be prepared for referendum in November. Uh, because of COVID, because of a number of reasons, um, we could, in theory, get there and just throw something at the wall. I have recommended to the building committee that they wait. We need to go through the public information process and build support and identify what the scope has to be. Um, so a referendum date has not been set or established or even a target has not been established. But realistically, sometime next year would give us the time to go through this process and really vet um what, what would the community want to bring to the general populace.
Yeah, no, not unfortunate of COVID, but I mean, you gotta get, gotta get some in person, be able to protect the community, you know, they've gotta. Obviously, Zoom or WebEx or whatever we're using, it just doesn't translate well, I don't think, to something like this. You just don't have a lot of people bothering you on it.
That's hard.
Yeah, it's hard, it's difficult, so we get that.
Well, I guess the good thing is, is by having these first few meetings, the goal was to get the word out and let us to start seeking into the community, hey, we're designing a community center. Um, people are gonna start hearing about it, talk about it, and, you know, there'll be misinformation and, but if we can start talking about it and people start to know that it's, it's on the boards, uh, we'll start to get more interest.
Let's start somewhere. Okay, any other questions? We appreciate it, and thanks for the hard work, I know it's a long road, we all know it's a long road, the whole town is a long road. It's been a long road for many years, so we appreciate that, that so far and, and we'll.
Well, thanks for having us, and uh, I'm sure we'll keep talking about.
Yeah, sure, oh, yeah. Plenty more to talk to them.
I'll see you guys at the room.
Yeah, all right, yeah, yeah.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, thanks, nice job.
Thanks, Charlie.
Do you have copies?
We have a story here.
Um, it's a lot of paper, so. You know what, I'll, I'll leave over here, you can pick them up later.
Yeah, I'll say.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much, Tom.
It's good to hear, thanks again, okay, thank you, see ya.
Bye bye.
Thanks, good to get updated on that, we know it's, they've been working on it, so it's good to see what's happening. So number three.
Number three, uh, you actually approved this item in July. Because we submitting, because the funding sources have changed, but the wood chipper, number, they still haven't brought the order for that.
Oh, yeah, right, right, right.
They'll take it out uh, Thursday. We given the name, on the phone, would you like to add something, Kevin?
I wanna unmute everybody, I don't know what's going on here.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, again, yes.
All right, sorry, yeah, this is Mike, um, yeah, this is uh essentially bookkeeping. As Roche said, you approved this on July twenty first, at the July twenty first meeting, it's for the wood chipper, chipper. Um, the finance department actually re, uh, did some bookkeeping and rearranged the transfers, but it still adds up to seventy-five thousand dollars. But instead, it's from four accounts, not three. So Kevin just essentially rearranged, I think, some of the numbers based on what he had available or what the final numbers were. So this is essentially bookkeeping.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Um, I know the, I had a conversation with the chairman of the board of finance, that they're thought on buying any capital. Much put off for a while, but um, you know, so we sent this one to them because of, obviously, the last storm and all the other cleanup that probably has to be done on the side of the storm. So this of all the, some of the other capital equipment that was on the list, I told them that the council probably would agree that some of it could be put off later in the year, but this one, this is probably certainly important at the moment to, to get, to get to them. Hopefully, they will approve it. Great, thank you. Great? Yeah, okay, take a moment.
Okay, I moved to approve a transfer of twelve thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in the highway health insurance account, twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from the highway power account. Stormwater analysis account, and seven thousand six hundred from the school electricity account. All in the general fund to the wood chipper account, general fund, pending approval of the board of finance. Transfer replaces the transfer approved by the town council on July twenty first, two thousand twenty.
All right, second on that. Very much, any other comments or questions? There are none, all in favor, I like both, so move.
Thank you, item number four.
Thank you.
This is a catch basin materials, the road projects, um, thank you for taking this one, Tim.
Yes, I am. Uh, this is essentially um an existing state contract we used um all last year. And it's extended through the December of this year. And it's for essentially catch basin, tops, grade rings, sumps, and all kinds of drainage uh, uh, components for the uh, the road, road program. And also if, if we have catch basins that are, you know, need, need work on roads, we're not gonna pave. And it's for United Concrete and Cromwell Concrete. And we have a sufficiency of funds for twenty thousand dollars, we'll get this, uh, the funds from the road and bridge account.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Sure.
Okay, um, obviously we need, so uh, then the motion.
Okay, councilor, I move to utilize the Connecticut DAS contract one seven P S X zero 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 nine to purchase the necessary concrete catch basin materials from Cromwell Concrete Products of Cromwell, Connecticut or United Concrete Products of Yalesville, Connecticut through December thirty first, two thousand twelve.
Second on that.
Second, yeah.
Thank you, uh, any other comments or questions? There are none, all in favor, I like both, motion carries, thank you.
Item number five is, thanks, Mike, uh, the Rock River or Ever Source Property Tax Awesome settlement. This is discussion, this is a session, and uh, motion is there, but I believe it is for.
Yeah, I think we'll table it for a couple of weeks to, uh, for us, just to let it sink in a little bit. The issue for our town, we'll reconsider it at the next meeting.
Thank you. Item number six, uh, is the authorization for the town manager, back in the middle of the area engineering. Uh, E L U R restriction, two on Farmington Avenue, Chris Edge.
I'm willing to unmute everybody.
Please.
Go on, Chris.
Thank you very much, town manager. Yes, uh, this is uh in reference to what we had done with uh the new owners Newport Realty Group as well as what we're working with on D E C D with the grants on eight eighty-nine. Uh, eight sixty-one Farmington Avenue did some, had some contamination going on to it. This E L U R, which is uh environmental land use restriction, would be on the town records. Essentially saying that if you took the building down and rebuilt, there are certain things you can and cannot do. Um, LaRero is a group we've been working with through its entire process, and this adds to their work, but it's something particular because it's the E L U R for eight sixty-one Farmington Avenue.
Okay, uh, any other, any questions for Chris? That would some work that we need, need to get done, so we'll go ahead and take a motion.
And councilor, we're going to process and authorize the town manager to enter into the contract here, LaRero Engineering to work on E L U R for eight sixty-one Farmington Avenue for a fee of five thousand dollars that will be paid for demolition right now, mediation account, this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you, second on that.
Second, yeah.
Thank you very much. Um, okay, any other comments or questions? There are none, all in favor, I like both, so move. That's it?
That's it.
Well, what, what, come on, what's the other nineteen issues?
Well, I have, well.
Two hours? That's a lot.
We have thirty-two left, then.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, no, we don't need to see that. That's, okay.
All right, so a few updates and a couple of items looking ahead, want to talk to you about. Uh, just very briefly, we use the tax collection, it's actually the pen.
Oh, what?
We were at, uh, end of August, we got sixty-one percent of our total target last year, we are at sixty-four percent.
Wow.
Approximately about, um, forty, just said, but, probably, at ten. So it's just stupid.
Yeah, it's stupid.
Uh, we'll keep you informed as we talk to this. Uh, our big project, the T O D project, moving well, we have been buying, having, there are traffic stuff, which is great, which is, like, see.
Yeah.
One lane only, other planes, other thing, everything's moving smoothly. Uh, there is one issue that we are working with. It, at the end of the ball, about the connection to, which is, uh, E O T. Uh, T O D is pointing to different departments and what else. So I have, I do, the commission, and we think very helpful, are you ready to work together? And we're pretty much asking, not four, six weeks, we're, we're, more.
Right.
So we'll keep pushing.
These events always seem to.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a simple thing, but it takes time, I think.
Yeah.
Um, so looking ahead, there are a few things I want to talk about. Uh, one thing important, but coming in that shot, right? So, um, can I, am I talking about this, can, can filming, uh, can I say something correctly? Um, so the mailing of the uh, applications, the valid applications, the state is paying that begin September eighth also. Um, so they will be sending it out to all voters, they will be asked to, um, they, for me, the absentee ballot, send the application to the public. And once he get them, um, I think, uh, our plan is to, uh, yeah, the dates here, I thought we could send it back, we get to the ballots, but it tells me it's October second, they don't need to send it back to the voters. yeah, the dates here. I thought we could send it back, we get to the ballots, but it tells me it's October second, they don't need to send it back to the voters, ballots. And so what good, what we wanna do is to tell folks two things. One, and send it back, we'll have them mail it. And also, when you send the ballot, we'll have them land it. Drive to town hall. There's a nice big ballot box outside. It's hundred percent guaranteed, drop it in, that it'll be counted. There's some folks are skeptical of the mail-in, that it's a lot of stuff that it's going without key on time. Uh, that can, that a concern, what we, is a concern. Yeah. If you're gonna have a lot of absentee ballot payments this time, yeah. Um, just based on what we saw for the primary, I'm trying to use those numbers, we had about from the total ballots that we received, approximately percent of that, uh, was absentee ballot. A little bit more than half. Now, the participation was lower for the primary, but in, in, at two thousand sixteen, eight percent, if you look at these numbers, we had eighty four percent of all folks. That was the vote turnout for the two thousand sixteen election. So we have about fourteen thousand registered voters. Eighty four percent turnout, we do about, about eleven thousand seven sixteen, close to twelve thousand. Um, this is me saying, if you bank for fifty percent of that, that means you're gonna get at least sixty one of our absentee ballots. The state is actually asking us to bank a lot more, right? So, um, we have talked about this in, in two, can handle this volume, just go to its office and, uh, I mean, putting some plans together to have more people help out with the process. We're thinking, who that, we have a bank in a couple of weeks or so. Again, I want you to sort of comment on this, because I have been actually for the last two weeks or so because of this.
It's difficult, we just don't know. No, and unfortunately, Dan has kind of felt the pain of some of this where then, uh, because so many of the ballots were mailed out so late that then they extended, um, for two days, they received the ballots, so the numbers were not final. Instead, Tuesday night, they weren't final until really Friday. So that was, you, I, she was so nice on the phone about everything. I would have been yelling at somebody. But, um, the, we anticipate, knowing what we went through, will, um, the state, as Roche said, is sending out the applications, starting on the eighth with the larger cities and then going into the smaller towns. We have already had people call us for absentee applications. We tell them that they can either wait for the state, or they can, um, we'll send them to them. People have, or they can download them from the internet. And people have been using the ballot box already to drop off their applications. So we're starting the process. The anticipation is that I can, um, I work very well with the registrar of voters. We have a great rapport. And I'll probably be using some of their deputies to help with the process because they're familiar with the election and everything. And we just have to see how things go. Um, the biggest issue is not knowing how many applications you're gonna get at any time. The, for the primary, we received over one thousand absentee ballots back that Monday. And the registrars and I have put in a lot of hours, but we did a good job and it worked out really well, but we had to redo this and everything else. It was just, that was a hard day. Um, prior to that, um, there was a day when I had three sleeves of applications coming. You know, from, it's just, it's the mail. You just can't, and they're trying. We, we call New Britain every day. And they have made special trips out and everything else. So there's all that, you know, everybody's trying. But the biggest thing is to get the applications in, and we're gonna get the ballots out on time. That was the problem with the primary. It was over ten days where the mail-in house did not send out those ballots.
Good news is, we are sending out the ballots this time. Anyhow, so we have some control of that. Send the applications, get it out. We just need to have a, this is, um, I want, my thinking is a small town, we encourage people, they want to, they're sending in their ballot, just try, just try by, just put it in the box. It's much easier, faster, quicker, uh, and it's guaranteed. It has the key.
I'm a lot.
Okay, what was the percentage in the primary or voting?
There's seven percent turnout.
It was, um, for the Democrats, it was a thirty four percent, and for the Republicans, a thirty seven.
So thirty six percent. So we can assume it'll be just over double.
Oh, I think it's gonna be more than that. Listen to what the news is saying. Yeah. The, this is just, I don't think, outside of the state rep on the Republican side, and that was only three of our districts compared to all five of them. I talked to numerous people who said it was a given. They knew who was gonna win the primary. So it was all, you know, so there wasn't the challenge. I think now, we're having so many people, and I'm having people call from all over, and they want to be able to vote. And it's because they're concerned not only with the presidential, but also you have your Congress, and you have your state rep, and you have your, you know, Senate, and you have everybody on the ballot now. So I do think this was low for turnout. It's probably is average for a primary, but these were already given candidates. You knew who was gonna win, you know, outside of the state, um, representation. Now, Donna really had the only talent.
So, so we're gonna get, I guess the key seems to be to get nation out, you know, as much as we can to people through our, you know, website, Facebook, right over the page, whatever we gotta do to. Right? No.
So once we get the, uh, applications from the folks, one is to try to, people shouldn't wait. Soon as they get this, the application, they should send it in to the council, and people that ties promote, say, we get something, the citizen, you know, on Facebook, another day. Drop it, drop the application at Cromwell. And then, once you get the ballot, it's the same thing, send the application back then. And just drop it in as quickly as possible, don't wait, you know, the, you know, action.
The mail-in.
The mail-in, yes.
That's also sometimes the problem, is that people don't send them in time, the ballots. I, I will be, I hate to say this, but this, these are the figures. There was four hundred and forty four ballots on the Democratic side that were not returned, either in time to be counted or not returned. On the Republican side, there was a hundred and seventy one ballots that were not returned or, um, just not sent in. Now, some of those people put a change in their mind and decided to go to vote in person.
Oh, right, yeah.
And that's always possible.
So we don't know that. We don't know.
Plus, the Democratic, I mean, it was really no time.
No, but you had a, we had, the interesting thing with the Democrats is that you had more people vote in the Democratic primary than with the Republicans. Democrats were one thousand six hundred and eighty one, Republicans were one thousand four hundred and eighteen. I mean, some of that has to do with the numbers, but, you know, it's just, that's the most important thing, is when you're going and you're talking to your constituents, your residents, not only do they have to send in the application and send in and get the ballot, they have to send the ballot in.
You know, are we gonna put this on the website?
It is on the website.
Fine, because that way we can share it.
Yeah.
I mean, if it gets to Facebook, it's on Facebook too. I don't know.
We've been wait, you know, Facebook, I wanted to wait until we got the application out. But the, uh, and maybe I'm wrong on that. I can do something tomorrow. But on, right under the spotlight is the election information. You click on that. We tried really hard. We have a direct link to the Secretary of State's website. Um, people are registering to vote.
Yeah.
And, you know, like I said, we're getting the applications in, so we're trying.
So we're gonna like to just make this problem in the primary where they gave it three more days till the postmark.
We're hearing no.
Huh?
We're hearing no.
They're hearing no, they're not gonna do it?
That's my understanding.
Hear no now?
Yeah. That had to do more with the mailhouse.
Yeah.
Not sending out the ballot.
Right, right.
Almost ten day.
Yeah. Yeah, but, you know, I hear about the post office would play, so I can see that.
So tell people to drop them off.
I wish they would, that would be so much simpler for everyone.
Yeah, it's telling kid you can't get all the old, the state, but.
Maybe, Burl, just bring it to the, bring it to the box.
Yeah. What about, Mark is pretty good here at Dallas.
Yeah.
Just outside, it just goes like.
Yeah, put it in the box.
Yeah.
Put it in there, right?
So we'll, we'll have some promotion.
I'll guarantee you, in two weeks, this seniors, uh, center is gonna be four hundred million dollar boom-dambo. That's gonna go across the road. I mean, wait.
Didn't talk to the happy one.
The happy floats out there. So.
It's gonna freeze there. Is there any, um, any issues with you as far as like, I don't know, getting rid of.
I was gonna say that there was, you had a large amount of ballots to go through and stuff.
No, I honestly think the registers did a phenomenal job. They had, um, we got the bulk of the absentee ballots, of course, being counted for that ten o'clock count on Tuesday. And they used their senior, um, people. They brought in some other people, but they tied them up with somebody who was senior, and it really went well. The only thing that people have to remember is that you can use the ballot box until eight P M election night. So we did a count like at ten, which was the major one, and then we did another one, maybe like at two or three, I can't remember. And then I had to hold everything because we need privacy on the, the vote. And I went out there at eight o'clock, got the rest of the ballots in there. And, um, we have to, you know, check them off and things like that, and then I can turn them over to the counters. So it does take time, sometimes, to do that. Um, but I think they was done by nine o'clock.
Hmm, that's not bad.
So I don't know what will happen when you get this kind of, you know, turnout with absentees.
Have any people call in and say they never got their ballot, or they requested their ballot, or was any of that able to rectify, maybe they, you know, because I don't know every issue, maybe it was the wrong address or
Yep.
On the wrong, on or off the board rolls.
It gave us a great opportunity to clean up the voting list. So what the registers did is that, um, everything went back to the Secretary of State, that was a return on, on my.
True.
So then, um, Secretary of State divided it, you know, sent it, like, our ones to Burl and Hope, I gave them to the registers. We had a couple stacks, maybe about three, four, and the registers went through them. Some of them, it, they were able to maybe correct a unit number. They contacted a lot of the voters. Some of them did move out of town. Um, some had died. Um, it just cleaned up the list a lot. And they really worked hard to get that list cleaned up for the, um, the, um, mailhouse gathered up all the data on August twenty sixth. So anything that was in the system as of the twenty sixth is what is being mailed out. Right? Um, we're trying that when new voters come in, the registers send them a letter of confirmation, we're including, um, an application for an absentee ballot at that point. Not required, but we figured this saves. I'm not mailing it out separate, they're not, you know, they don't know where we are doing it. But if people don't get the application, they should call, um, me, the registers, or myself, because there's something, something happened. All right? Maybe they thought they were registered and they're not. You know, we had a lot of that with the primary, where people think you're registered as a Republican and they're not, or, you know, they're a Democrat, and they think they're Republican, and, you know, they probably are Republican, but they're registered as a Democrat, you know. So again, it was kind of like trying to make sure that those things are taken care of.
Uh, gotta figure that out. Um, so, so you can register to vote up until what, the day, day, um?
Yeah, so.
So.
Presidential.
So my question is, so I know, I noticed on the door today, so I, I know it's not all, it's kind of by appointment only. Don't you think for this, we ought to make sure that it's available by appointment only in the registry office for the past couple of months?
I can talk to them more about it. What we've done is that, like, even this afternoon, we had people that came in.
Yeah.
So we can give them the registration.
Yeah.
So as long as they call, we can talk to the registers.
Even if people don't, they won't call.
They can go in. Yeah, okay, okay.
Even if it is so, yeah, about that, anyway.
Right, yeah. Right, right, now there's our.
So Kate takes them in.
Yeah, so we, my office can process, you know, the, and it, it's working out right now, you know, and people are registering also online.
Yeah.
And that helps. Now, um, I hope a lot of people don't do this, but there is the election day registration, E D Rs.
Yeah.
And people can show up the day of election. They have to come to town hall. They can register to vote, and they'll vote on the machine. But it's a lot of.
How many did we have four years ago?
Or E D Rs?
Election Day.
Election Day.
Election Day. We had one hundred and seventy three.
Wow, wow. Wait, wait, what last one?
He knew that number was right in my head.
Yeah, yeah.
Those people are on a fender, they came to one hundred and seventy three.
Blink, blink, that's, that's kind of amazing, right?
Last minute, yeah. Oh, I think I gotta go register today.
Now, they, if they're already registered, you can't change affiliation until they can have that opportunity and so forth.
They should have, can do it at this point anytime, because we don't have primaries. There was issues before the primary, but there had a cutoff date. All right. But now, if somebody wanted to change their.
Just one.
They can do it now.
Yeah. That's the problem. So.
Any other good news?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I said that was good news, but that's okay.
We'll have this topic in the committee and make sure that we did it right. Uh, and I just want to share with you, that'd be my key question.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that. I think Keith is getting it out there to everybody.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, the next one, thinking ahead, we talked about it at the last meeting, about reading the vote committee, with the, with the question.
Okay.
So I, I'm, I'm gonna suggest some, some names for your consideration, uh, for the golf, uh, committee. And then, and add, uh, you might have your own thoughts and ideas. So I, I came up with, uh, Pete Fazio, who is, uh, chairman of, and founder of our show, so he can, uh, start with. And then, uh, Yale, who's the last name?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I, I think she'll be good at it, it's very, uh, very broad thinker, uh, uh, that's all, I also think it's good to have. Uh, not all in this committee.
Yeah.
So, uh, if possible. Uh, I had thought about, uh, Sal Ordinaro, um, and I don't think he's mentioned to have this, so I'll, we'll talk about that. See if anyone will go with that. Um, I do think we wanna have, uh, more Kevin from the staff for the financial end. And then perhaps the new, we thought, there's a lot of new to, that. And, um, probably wanna have to look up the controls. So. So first step is to decide who, uh, the consistency of the committee of, you understand? And then the second one, what I would recommend is if a charge, I'm just.
Right, figured out, yeah.
Right, what, what is it that he wants to, to, to then some focus, um, direction? So I, you don't have to answer everything now, but this is sort of homework and think about it. If you have any thoughts, I'll be, I could do, uh, figure it down and sort of get somewhere like, yeah, I think we should stop short of, of, yeah, back in session, so to say.
Do you want that on the next agenda?
Or?
Yeah, we could. Probably get down with that. And now this committee, yes, we're gonna figure out what we're charging, but, you know, we gotta figure out, so maybe, maybe one more meeting, a discussion perhaps, just.
Maybe, yeah.
Uh, just what, what the charge would be, and, you know, candidates knew that, and, and then maybe, maybe our first meeting in October. Get going or something, does that make sense?
What I also can offer, if you have ideas.
Yeah.
You can email it to me, and I can put a document together and test it out.
I mean, it's kind of going off of what the golf commission already told us, right? Option, right, so they were really just gonna think of this by, with options. You know, look into it, look delve into it a little bit more detail and.
I think also like a, a broader strategy, you know, what you want to, what you want to do this, to, wanting to, uh, want that goal, right? Because certainly the financial component of it.
Yeah, at all, yeah.
Have, have a, kind of put in the taxpayer, that question of, but what, what, what do you want it to be? Let, let, thank all of you about the, our house and all, fifty and all, uh, so.
Was there an RFP that just went off of that?
RFP for the, uh, uh.
Catching, right, the rest.
Zero.
Really?
To invest in, do something, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe, I've been looking at the talent, someone there, change the contract, which will. Situation soon. But, you know, it's.
So, well, interesting, was it just Ramsey did it, right? That's it?
That's it.
That's it? Yeah, interesting, huh? Yeah, no choices there, no. Yeah, I'm a good fan, I'm, I'm just kind of always want some proposition, right? A little, yeah, you know, it'd be nice that.
But about full party scheme, the two of them.
Oh, really?
Yeah, there's a lot of.
So there was interest.
So who, who has a lot of portal pain, um, but didn't put, throw their name in the hat.
Oh.
Is it, is that expired?
Has there been any work done there? Has there, has there been any work done since the last time I was there? Agent Facebooking, uh, in our kitchen area.
I mean, we, we've done some work to comply with the help.
Right, right. But that's.
But it's big, so.
Oh.
So I encourage you to email or let me know if you have any ideas, I'll put something, because then. We'll talk more at the next meeting.
Yeah, 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 probably.
Sorry?
There you go.
Um.
A lot of work.
Yep, very quickly, a couple of updates. I have, I spoke with Joe, Joe Skid, House Authority.
Ah, yeah.
Because we are getting close to the deadline for the C H F A, uh, application and, uh, obtaining tax credit. So he's doing some work, they met at the House and Department, but I have asked him to, 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 um, meet next. Certainly, to provide the counsel for that.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I think he won't do that, also.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah. The deadline in November, and then it'll come out in, uh, February, March, I'll sort of get the credit, but before we apply for the tax credits. You know, be able to know whether we can get the necessary points. But if you're not, if you're not in the zone with the number of points you need, it's, you remember, yeah. So he's working with that, so. Uh, and I will also, perhaps next meeting, when, uh, of course, right? We have, give you an update on seniors center opening, uh, the state has given some guidelines.
So, very strict.
Uh, in terms of what can be done there, put up seats, right? Social distancing, and what activity, the nutshell, not too much. I mean, they can come into the room, they can do anything, try activities, whatever, share, share anything. So you could have coffee hour, but you still have to have six feet apart and one person up there.
Everybody gets like a disposable deck of cards and it's usually throw away, I guess, right? I don't know, it's kind of like, yeah, I'm doing papers, go, go play.
Go fish.
Right, right, all right.
So, um, but let's, let us share that with you, because I think some seniors might wanna come back to the seniors center, but I think a lot of them don't.
Yeah.
Because they're, they're concerned, right?
Yeah, true.
Can't have a social hour, they can't do activities, and, uh, who, who, they cannot do. For their own sake, so the state has come up with some guidelines, but I spoke with. But, um, as of now, the neighboring towns, I don't know, they want to, hopefully, at least come to the door.
Sounds like what it seems to be.
Yes.
When that, no, your first meeting in October, I think it's supposed to be.
Oh, that's right.
When is it, I'm sorry?
That's right. Huh?
Yeah.
Wow.
You've done, you've done it like in the spring and the fall, where we have the town council meeting at the seniors center.
Yeah.
So that meeting in October, we, I can, I'll move back.
Yeah, I'll move back, yeah, so we can do that, no?
All right, so it was supposed to be at one thirty?
Right.
Um.
So just normal time?
Yeah, do it for seven.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you didn't remind us about that, yes, yes, I forgot about that.
Yeah, about two and three o'clock.
Yes, not, I'm not. And then, of course, we're trying to invite the down, a lot of these folks at the state, so, um, this is very, very hard. Or government, come into a debate, but. I don't. But I think we should. So, um, that's my, maybe another report I'll start from.
Hey, so I wanna report two things, can you, can you get something out there about, so political signs up a thirty day, remember? Political signs.
Yes.
Mind of that?
It's, um.
And I forget what, I can't remember.
Put something out on the, uh.
Maybe on the, on the, on the town website or a Facebook page, you know, maybe put something, citizen. Remember, we went through that whole ordinance that just.
That's, that's on public property.
Well, you know, it's really no signs on public property, so that's the thing, it's really private property. Maybe someone had a little lawn sign.
I don't know if we keep that.
What would the ordinance say? Jeff, do you remember what the ordinance said?
So.
Jeff, so?
Yeah, yeah.
So, remember, we went through that whole ordinance because of the whole sign issue there at one point, so we had an ordinance for thirty days? I mean, that, that's what, I mean, there's no signs on the state right of way allowed at all. There's no signs on public property allowed, right? So.
That's it.
Private only, but we still. Nobody for thirty days.
I don't remember that.
No, you never did that.
We, we do that ordinance?
Yeah, I, I actually did.
I mean, because it goes back to, then what was the purpose of the ordinance? You can put them on the schedule anyway, at any time.
I checked with, uh, Arena, I actually printed out.
Yeah.
So the temporary signs, their decision, they live for a period of not to exceed thirty days. So you can put a sign for thirty days, but there's no reference to.
Public property?
No, 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 it's private, no. Thirty days are, doesn't say that it's thirty days before the election.
Oh, that's what we, uh.
Not, it's not here, right? So you could put a sign now.
Yeah.
Take it down and tomorrow, go put it across your neighbors.
Yeah.
You can just put it with this.
This is very bad ordinance. Jeff, what did you, Jeff, what do you, what do you say about that?
I'm having a hard time hearing you guys, cause you're kind of talking over each other.
Oh, sorry. So, we're talking about the ordinance, remember the sign ordinance we did because we wanted to kind of have, not. It was really the political signs that we talked about, that they were not gonna be put up thirty days before the election.
Right.
Hard day for that. So we prohibited them everywhere? I mean, if, if we're saying it's just public property, I mean, the signs that were being put up are.
I'll call it, the thirty, the thirty days is private property, the public property is a general prohibition.
Isn't it? So it's private property?
Right, the public property, the state right of way.
You're breaking up, Jeff, I can't, I'm sorry.
What's that?
Can't hear you, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Can't hear you.
No, the, the issue was with property, because we said that the state right of way and public property, there's no right to put any signage on.
No, we can't hear you, Jeff, you're breaking up, we'll have to.
Yeah, you broke up, Jeff. I mean, that was the whole purpose of that ordinance, we all kind of agreed on that stuff.
Yeah, but I thought, I thought there was Second Amendment rights.
Oh.
Uh.
Second. Second, not second. First Amendment against free, freedom of speech.
Yeah. Or first or second?
Yeah, I mean. Well, we're kind of looking at what the ordinance says, we got to just, you know, we did an ordinance for a great reason. I was saying, it's no good, I passed it, I did the whole search on it.
I, I, that wasn't my understanding.
Huh?
That wasn't my understanding.
Sure it was, that was the understanding, that's why we did it. Because everyone was complaining about signs being all over the place for like two months. We were angry, so we said, well, it's limited to thirty days.
Yeah, but I didn't think we could tell someone that they can do on their own, private property.
Well, you can't put it on public, you can't put it on the state right of way, so what else would it, who would be telling them? No one? I think, why would we do it then? Doesn't make any, doesn't make any sense to me, I mean, I, I, I can, I see your point, but, but it wouldn't matter, you know, public property, you can't put it on, and you can't put it on a right of way. So we didn't need ordinance for that. We did it for preparation of signs. Remember, we went down to the point of the spaghetti supper, you know, we talked about all of it.
Yeah, right.
You said, well, if it's, you know, just for a day or two, no big deal.
Yeah, it was the voice counts, uh.
Yeah, the voice counts, uh, yeah, we tried to kind of take that into account, right? Not, not just political, it was small sign. Open up, yeah.
How about if I look at it for tomorrow?
Yes.
Jeff and I can talk about it.
Yeah, yeah, unless it's.
And then we'll send it out to everyone.
Yeah, send it out.
And then we'll get something on the, whatever is appropriate, we'll get on the website.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Because you put it up for five days, take it down. Five days, put it up.
It's, it's, it's the thirty day rule, enough of thirty days, you take it down for days, back up.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think that, I don't think that's what we said, but, all right, we can look at it.
Check with the council, yeah.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. So, and then check on that, since the season is upon us, and, uh, the only point, well, Rochelle, I know you, I asked you this. It got to me, so they pulled the S R O out of McGee, apparently, and also there was some comment that security, uh, out armed. Starts apparently.
That is correct, um, so the reason for the delay, they've been working out policy with the attorney and the board of head and the superintendent. To secure, with the disalignment, but, but, I guess, for the superintendent and chief of security. Trying to accomplish, was it the board of head, but back and forth, it's done, there's a policy plays, and they are.
So, so, so just out of curiosity, misalignment, so when, when you did this whole security plan, send it out to the people of Berlin. Black kids in school, they were overwhelming in favor of armed, in favor of armed guards. That was always the deal, the deal was not to pull the S R O out of McGee or the high school. This was all, this was all like, this was all part of the whole deal, and now it seems like there's, there's a misalignment? The misalignment, baby, word of that.
Handling on the fire up, there was no policy.
Okay, they needed a policy, okay.
There's a policy, it's the working on the policy, getting everybody on the same page.
Okay.
Now, if everybody's on the same page, there's a policy.
Yep, there.
The legality is what the board of opponents knew, what Brian had in mind, but the chief, so, 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 there was no policy.
Do we know what the policy is?
I was gonna say, can we have a policy?
Can we see the policy?
We can, uh, it's, we're a bit of a.
Yeah, because I don't want it to be where they're locking up their weapon in school and their duty. That's not the policy, because that was never the intent of the program. By the people, Berlin didn't want it that way either, the people, not just us.
Yes.
Two-year negotiation for that.
I'll get a policy.
Yeah, I'd like to see that policy, it's, it's, you know, we're funding that, for certain program. And if now they're gonna be negging on the board of head or superintendent, police chief, or whoever's changing what the policy was, that's pretty disturbing to me. And us not knowing about it is really disturbing, how they didn't change anything? But I'd like to know, because people have said to me, they're hearing different things.
So, so I'm gonna policy.
They just wanna make sure that we all.
Okay, Mr. Tye, funny fact, that was, I think they changed, there was no policy.
Okay, there was no policy.
There was no policy.
Okay, all right. I mean, schools haven't.
All, you can safety.
Yeah, they haven't been in session, so I mean, it's not.
Where, or the shoulder, but, uh, the, uh, what hours, all those, are defining the, so, I don't know.
They probably need a deadly force policy, for sure.
So I'll get a copy of that, too. Um, in terms of the S R O.
S R O? That was never part of the deal, either.
So I spoke with the chief, I mean, you know, what we had. So it is, uh, his discretion to have any S R O there or not.
Hmm.
So.
That, that, he, he, he was at the table and made these decisions, though, so now he's gonna re-neg on his deal? Uh, that's, 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 I mean, we spent two years on this, and, and that was the final agreement with him, with Chief Platt, Superintendent, Board of Ed, Town Council. Everybody was on the same page, and now all of a sudden, it seems to be a different page as we come to this beginning of the school year. So that's disturbing.
First of all.
Reason, yeah.
About, you had five vacancies, but you had to pull resources from some extensive, um, S R O, um, middle school. And it's the end of the first one.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it.
Uh, he also didn't think it, but, uh. Resources to send the eighty-five, ninety thousand dollar salary, uh, at, at S R O.
Yeah.
So he had five openings that we staffed for.
Yeah.
And primary reason he pulling them out.
Yeah.
Because now all, uh, five locations, the high school, the school, the school, they'll have security guards.
Who's part of the high school, too?
No, just the middle, I'm saying, they all have armed, armed security.
Right.
Guards. And then, for whatever reason, if they needed a S R O in the middle school.
Right.
They can follow from the high school, the S R O can respond, I think. So that was the decision, again, the square that, at the festival, they'll do that, I don't know whether what, it or other group, but this.
Yeah, well, we all sat at the table many, many days and worked all this out, that was never supposed to be a zone, so.
And S R Os, security guards on S R O.
That's right.
I think that.
That's the one.
School is, is pretty, I don't think it's a good look, I don't think it's a good, it also helps bridge a link between the police and community. Between my kids at young age, if you're gonna pull from the most volatile school, any school, or all the meetings, it's probably that.
They, they build relationships.
Yeah, that's, that's basically, it's S R O, that's your first priority for building relationships.
Yeah.
That's why we want them in the middle school and the high school, despite the, you know, the armed security guard to be, uh, supplement.
We should need on this, I think, maybe we should.
I think we.
Get together and discuss this, so we're all on the same page.
Should be plucking to the chief, I guess, first of all. So maybe, uh, he needs to come to our meeting next time.
And in my case.
And, uh, probably need some clarification, plugging. That, that, that's, that was, those are the two schools that are, as we know, the middle school and the high school, the most critical relationship. Despite the armed security was supplementing that, certainly to cover our elementary schools, that was always the plan to do, but we never were supposed to take the S R O. But we never were supposed to take the SROs on. I mean, I could get for a week or so if he needed to cover something, that's understandable, but it's full time, and when is, I can send him back about, right? There's no plans to send him back?
From what I heard, through the discussion, basically, no SRO, you'll have to take it from high school chair.
That's a good one. Well, maybe less police cars and we hire another officer then, I don't know, you know, I mean, there has to be some given, taking a budget, that's what the game that the chief wants to play, that, that's terrible. That's not, you know, we spent.
Oh, wow, I would drive over and trust each.
We spent two years on this, working this out, right? All the aggravation we did, worked bad, worked hard, everywhere we worked hard, we all got together, we staffed, meetings, and all of us, we're, with the chief.
We should have agreed.
Huh?
That was that agreement.
Well, it was a gentleman's agreement, but, but this is what we, when we implemented the armed security program, that was always part of it. The Niki agreed to, the board of head agreed to, council, chief, the town manager, police commission, I mean, it goes on and on. Obviously, he's got his discretion and wants one. Okay, that's what you want to do, but it's not gonna play too well, it's for me. Sounds like the rest of the council's not too happy either, and so, aside from the board of head, I would hope they're not happy with it either, I don't know. They okay it, or it's just a fling at them, or, you know.
Yeah, discussion one.
Yeah. Okay, so they're not happy either, okay, so.
They don't agree with what's like a look.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's bad, that's really bad, so, alright, well, let's, let's explore it with, uh, let's see what. Like, I'm here at the next meeting? Yeah, let's do it. I know, I, I, who told me that, I said, you kidding me? It's not what we're talking about, so, and agreed to it. The board of head, you know, I can't believe, I wouldn't believe that would be, ever. Yeah, alright, that's it. So it is true, I mean, I wasn't even sure it was true. Hmm, okay, that's, alright, see what you knew about it, Rochelle. Figure it out. Okay, it's not, special meeting report, say, and it's not, right? And then, council communication.
I guess I should make a motion to approve the minutes.
Council, council communications, anybody, nobody, everybody's gone, okay, no, okay, good, okay, yeah.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of town council.
Second on that, second. Thank you, uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
Nice thing.
Brendan. August twenty fifth.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the special conference meeting, August twenty fifth.
Uh, second. Thank you very much, all in favor?
Okay.
Motion Jerry, favor. Uh, motion to Jerry.
Move.
Second. Thank you all in favor, hi. Thanks, everybody.
We got to ask to get more property on the map, so I can drop off.
I'm freaking crying too, we gotta pick up trouble, he's right there.
Maybe they can pull the big, they won't chip it over there and chip it up, our, our property.
You would need.
Alright.